Welcome to our school committee meeting number 1659 of the Southern Berkshire Regional School District. And we are going to start with reorganization. What time did I call the meeting's order? At 6:02, 6:01 PM?
This is when you first announced it.
Alrighty, so, I'm gonna start with the election of the chair. So I'm going to call for a motion to open nominations for members to serve as chair to the school committee.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so, it's gonna be motion to nominate whom? So, when you make your motion.
Oh, I see. So, I move to nominate myself.
Okay. Do we need a second?
Yes, I have a second.
Second.
I move to renominate Bonnie. Second. Sorry, Bonnie.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, then we're gonna close the nominations. Does anybody want to speak as to why they want to be the chair? Do you, are you guys interested in that? Or do you wanna just vote?
I think they're indicating just vote. Is that what that gesture means?
Okay, so, we will, so as I call your name, just please let me know if you are voting for David or for Bonnie. Okay? So Jim, I'm gonna start with you.
Bonnie.
Okay, and Sarah?
Bonnie.
Kim?
I think we should stay with Bonnie.
Carl, he's not here, I'm looking at, going around.
Thank you.
Art, you're welcome.
Bonnie.
Okay, Bonnie?
I'll vote for Bonnie.
Okay. Nancy?
Bonnie.
David?
David.
Dennis?
Bonnie.
Okay, so I think that's everybody who's here, right?
Correct, including you started with Jim, yes.
I did. Okay, so Bonnie, I am so happy to hand this over to you. Do you need this?
I am as...
Do you need this?
Yes.
The rest of it?
I am, I don't know how happy to continue this, I promise you, I will not use this on you, but it also means before I forget, I can sign the end of year report for you.
Yes, thank you.
Michelle, it's signed. With that, opening up nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Art again. Second.
And we have a second, so it's Nancy and Sarah. Do we have additional nominations? Okay, seeing none, I will close nominations. Roll call vote, Jim?
Uh, yes, Art.
Okay, piles out here. Kim?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Dennis?
Art.
Bonnie, yes. And David?
Abstain.
Okay, Art, I will now say, congratulations. All right. With that, we do not elect or nominate the other positions, but we have additional positions that have to be approved, which is, as our secretary official to the school committee, we need an approval to continue the appointment of Dr. Beth Regalbuto.
So moved.
Okay, we have a second on that?
Second.
Second, over here. Okay, so it's Dennis and Nancy. Okay, approving that appointment, we'll start over here. Dennis?
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Art?
Aye.
Kim?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And Jim?
Aye.
And Bonnie is an aye. Congratulations.
Oh, thanks.
I know. Love it. Our treasurer, Kami Lamica?
Lamica.
Can you just tell us?
She's been the treasurer since whole, last year.
Right, so...
She was a former school business official for a significant number of years. She's retired from the full-time job, but does this work as a treasurer? She's been doing a fabulous job for us since...
That's what I wanna hear.
Yeah, she's highly skilled in the field, so...
Thank you.
Since last, I wanna say, January or so, so...
I'll take a motion to approve Kami Lamica.
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 So moved.
That was a second, no, uh, motion from my left to Nancy, and there was a second somewhere over here, that was Kim. Okay. All right, and we'll start this time, Sarah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Oh, Jim answered too.
Nancy, yes.
David?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yes.
And Bonnie is a yes. Okay, our law firm, that's the same law firm who's been entertained by us for the past number of years.
Our buddy Josh.
Is it Josh? We've, we've done everybody in that firm, just about. I'll take a motion to approve our law firm from someone.
So moved.
So moved by Nancy, a second.
Second.
And that was Kim. All right, this time, I'll start Art.
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Sarah?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And Bonnie, a yes. See, all our votes should go like this. Um, I don't know, Michelle.
I don't know, yeah.
You've picked up on, no, I can editorializing it a little different. Fraud the vote. Clerk to the school committee, that's Michelle Castellano.
So moved.
That's Nancy.
Second.
Okay. And I will start Dennis.
Aye.
David?
Aye.
Yes.
Nancy? Art?
Aye.
Kim?
Yes.
Sarah? Jim?
Yes.
And Bonnie is an aye. Our doctor, Lisa Sildia.
Yep.
Take a nomination.
So moved.
So moved by Nancy, second.
Second.
Art. All right. With that, let's start with, uh, Kim?
Abstain.
Okay. Art?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
David?
Aye.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Kim?
Sarah, yes.
Sarah, that's okay.
I'm doing really well, you're on that side, everybody's kidding. All right, thank you, Sarah. And Bonnie, yes. And we had one abstention. Moving on to our standing reports, we have approval of the school committee minutes of 1657 from October 26th. I'll take a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Nancy, and second was Kim, that's what... Okay. Any discussion, any corrections, any comments? Yes?
For the public comment, who's Michelle? I have written Renee Wood as a public...
I have to go back.
Public comment, page two?
Oh, yeah, it was Renee.
It was, okay, all right.
Okay.
And I think that's all. I think that's all I saw.
Thank you very much. I went right through it. Anybody else? Any other comments? All right, I will take a motion, yes, David?
On the, under M E S C resolutions, on the page six, it indicates that there was a roll call vote by show of hands, but a roll call is by name, not a show of hands.
We did a roll call.
Right, so we can cross out show of hands.
Well, if it's roll call, then it needs to be identified by name, that's how roll calls work.
Yes, we know that.
I see.
Okay.
Did we raise our hands for this?
We never have raised our hands.
We did, so we just, we just removed...
We did raise our hands.
Yeah, roll call was show of hands, yeah.
It was show of hands, it wasn't roll call.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we're just calling it by show of hands?
Yes.
By show of hands?
Is that it, Michelle?
Yeah.
All right, thank you for that. Okay, any other, um, minutes? All right, as amended with those two amendments, I'll take a roll call vote, Jim?
Yes.
On approval of the minutes. Sarah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
And Bonnie, yes. Okay, minutes have been approved. All right, Beth, do you have four correspondence for us?
Um, well, enrollment...
Not correspondence, wrong.
So the enrollment report is in under 3B in your packet, and we are holding at 618 as of 11/1.
Good, nice. Nice. And you can see the monthly, and if you go back to the minutes we approved, well, you actually see it here as well, 3D, so you've got complete break now. All right, any, any concerns, anything you wanna bring up with that?
Right now.
Great. All right, receipt of correspondence?
No correspondence.
Okay, do we have a student representative report?
Um, we do not have a student representative report, but we do have a student spotlight.
Excellent.
Right, we don't have a student, I don't think we have students. Everybody's on their way for their Thanksgiving joy.
Okay.
So our, what we thought we'd share with you tonight for our student spotlight, seeing some of the team has just gotten back from the Transend Conference out in Colorado last week, the core team won. We had to put together a video on the fly that was around our case for change as part of the process that we've been working through with our core design and community team. So, we had the opportunity to include two of our students in this short little video about what our case for change is, so we thought we would share that tonight and see, you know, how we're coming along as we work through this process.
And I'll just state that this video has some clips in between the interviews of students in action, so some of it you may have, so, given that we were putting it together on the fly, as Beth said, some of it may be small, short clips that you've already seen in previous presentations, but some may be different.
And you used this to show to the entire team when you went to Colorado?
So there were nine other, there were nine other groups, and you were asked to put a short clip together about your case for change, and that they said in, you know, two or three minutes. So, the superintendents were in one location, but the group that, the rest of the teams that were together previewed each community's teams, and, you know, saw what their case for change were, and gave feedback on what they saw. And so, you know, these were kind of our first shots at capturing what we've learned so far from all of our meetings, all of our data, so they're very, you know, high level, but we thought we'd share this.
Thank you.
As a small, five-town regional school district of 630 students and 190 faculty and staff, we are always striving to be sustainable, to be funded adequately, and to provide relevant learning experiences for all. Research shows that it takes seven to 10 years to effect meaningful change. This is my seventh year in the district, and we have been actively building relationships with stakeholders across the community, putting processes and procedures in place, providing professional development, and working to enhance communication while gathering more input from the community. We were being encouraged to regionalize with the district next door, and constantly being asked, what is our plan? We have an incredibly supportive school community who wants to keep its schools and help in any way possible. The more we engage the community in the work of determining what does the future of education look like, the more certain themes emerged. Students and staff question the relevance of content and how it connects them to their community. They're asking for more connectedness to present and to the future. There needs to be flexibility in the future of programming.
You can put it inside of the cup, because it prints a nice honeycomb pattern, so the cup stays supportive. And if you get a closer look at the handle, then you can see exactly how it's made.
And mostly, we want to elevate student voice and incorporate their thoughts and interests into the future planning and design of our schools.
Two, one, ignition.
The hope is that the design journey grounds us in our true why, not what we think we need, but an understanding of what needs to change to get more engagement and buy-in, which will in turn encourage more investment in the district and reinvestment in our communities and the economy in the Berkshires. The work is about coming to the table with an open mind, no preconceived ideas or perceptions, deep listening, hearing all voices, being willing to think creatively and innovatively, and being open to trying something as a school community that moves us towards our collective vision.
Oh, I think you're out of the square. Yeah.
I arrived here halfway through my freshman year, and graduated from high school here in 1992. I met my wife here while we were students. I went off to college, I was at university, and came back here to be a teacher and coach. I have four siblings who all graduated from Mount Everest and are very successful in other parts of the country now. I had two children, a son and daughter, who have graduated here and gone on to college, where they've been successful. And I have two children now in high school here. I know what this place does, and I'm very excited about the things that go on. But does everything that happened here really connect with the students? Do all the students see the relevance of what they learned here and how it connects later in life? So case for change, specifically from a teacher perspective, I'm hoping that our design journey and everything we're doing here is going to make things more relevant to the student body. I hear this a lot, why are we doing this? Why do we care? Why do we care what happened hundreds of years ago? So I guess my goal for this whole thing is to make things very relevant, make things fun, make the kids enthusiastic, make sure the kids are engaged. I think it's impossible to learn without kids being engaged and actually caring about what we're studying and what we're learning. So, I wanna change things so kids buy in, and I think that's important, and buying in is very important. Without buying in, you're not gonna get much. So again, in case for change, I wanna make things very relevant to today's society of the 21st century, right? I wanna make sure kids are buying in, and I wanna make sure kids are feeling safe and having fun the same time all the way. We've looked at the student survey as part of our Transend meeting. We learned that students really wanted for their voices to be heard and have the opportunities to have the bill lifted.
After my class went tonight to the Transend survey, we all talked about that we wanted more hands-on activities because they would just be more fun and helpful.
As students, we know what we want, and we wanna see it implemented into our education and our school community as a whole.
So that was our very quick, high-level shot at explaining, oh, there we are, on day five of our, of our journey, working with the other nine teams from across the nation. So you can see our board hard at work, but we're not showing you anything on it yet. But our next Transend community meeting is gonna be on December 12th at 5:30, so the people who are currently on the community team will get their notification. We thought we'd wait till the Monday after Thanksgiving, because it's a little much going on right now, but, and, and we'll hear more about the work that's been going on across the nation.
Is public invited?
No. I mean, but, I mean, if you're on the community team, yes, but it's not a, I mean, I never say no to people who want to join the community team, but it's not a wide-open team yet, all the way open.
Any other comments? I definitely wanna make one. The fact that you, Alex, teach the students, all noting that discrepancy, and I know, I told you that Renee Wood and I had discussed that there's this concern between the understanding the relevance of everything we're teaching and what students are reacting to, and the fact that you are sort of putting in on this particular area, that's great, that's great to see, and looking forward to the next step. But I, I like the fact that I can go forward and say, yes, what you saw is exactly where they're heading. So that's great, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you to all who took part. Okay, public comment. Do we have any public there? Nope, okay, I mean, we do have public, but not for this one.
Oh, Mary's, Mary Sanders on.
Uh, oh, Mary, you're there, please. Do we have to bring her over? There she is.
Nope, she's there.
I have a few things to say. First of all, this is the first school committee meeting that I have attended. I hope to attend many more. I also want to tell the committee that I am the web administrator for the town of Egremont, and I have on our town's website a dedicated page of the school committee. Currently on that page, we have covered Transend up until what I saw tonight, the innovative pathways designation, the early college, the internships and work-based learning, your educational offerings at Mount Everest, and your, and your high school core academics.
That's George's wife.
We've also covered the fact of one of your recent grants, the fact that you took the heat off of town budgets with your proactive HVAC upgrade, and your solar that you are pursuing for sustainability, sustainability. I'd like to see this page continue to report to the Egremont community all the work that our district school is doing. Beth, I pick up when I can from your website, your news, it's been helpful. I merely want to say to the committee that the website is there, it is one meant to communicate to our residents, and I would welcome any input from the school committee, and certainly from Beth and others of the school.
Mary, thank you very much. We will, I'm not allowed to do comments, so I'll just say, we will definitely follow up with you, thank you. And now I know why I saw that on your website. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other from the Zoom world for comments? Okay, thank you. All right, business managers' report?
Okay, so tonight, we actually have an introduction of our new business manager joining us from TMS, since Chris DeJardin moved on. So tonight, we have Jonathan Cabalo, who is our new business manager, and he's going to be here in person with, I asked him to come say a few words about himself, and then he'll deliver tonight's report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you wanna come?
Up to the mic.
To the mic.
Thank you, good evening, everyone, it's a pleasure to be here. I've actually been working with TMS, I mean, I actually had a stint earlier, maybe about six years ago.
Do you want to speak up, I wanna be sure it's being, this is being picked up?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Hold on, we're gonna check the business.
Oh. As Superintendent Regalbuto indicated, I'm new to Southern Berkshire Regional School District. I've been here since, actually working under Chris's wing since September or so, but when Chris left in October, at the end of October, I've taken on the role as head business manager here. It's a pleasure working with department heads, working with building leaders, and I prepared for you a warrant report that you can view, and if you have any questions, I'll do my best. A little bit about me, I have about 28 years of public school experience, eight years as a classroom teacher, four at the high school and four at the middle level, but about 23 years, or certainly about 22 years as an administrator in various capacities, from elementary school principal, middle school principal, high school principal. I worked in a central office with superintendent around curriculum, and now I'm sort of, I thought that the last thing I'd do, which I really haven't done, is get into school business administration. So, I'm working with TMS as the consultant here, will provide me that opportunity.
Thank you. I'm sure with your experience, it will be helpful during our whole budget process, creative ideas, and looks like you'll be able to take on an important role.
Absolutely.
And any five minutes that you could spare, Beth, if you like.
Whatever I can do to help the district, I really look forward to.
Right, are you presenting the warrants now?
Well, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, I provided, I believe that our last school committee meeting, there was not a warrant, or there wasn't a school business administration report, so that's why you see a number of warrants here, going all the way back to the end of September. There's a few payroll warrants, some vendor warrants with some descriptions there that you can see, I don't know if there's any specific questions.
Okay, why don't I take a motion then to approve it?
Perfect.
And get a second, and then we could see if there are any questions. So I have a motion to approve warrants.
So moved.
That was Kim first. Nancy, you'll take a second on that?
I'll second. Yes, Bonnie.
You bet.
All right, so given that we have a motion and a second, do we have any questions related to the warrants? As you can see, all of the solar, the payroll.
That's fair enough.
Right, pretty, all right, with no questions, I will take a vote on the warrants, starting with Sarah?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
David?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yes.
And Jim?
Yes.
And Bonnie, aye. So the warrants are passed. Do we have anything in grants and gifts?
So we do have, we're...
Special?
A donation in memory of Jan Storty, who was a teacher here for many, many years. She donated school supplies to students, and so I just wanted to bring that to the committee's attention and just share that, so we could recognize that.
All right, so it's, it is, it's a donation, but without a, an amount associated with it?
Yeah, yeah.
So it's just a general, okay.
Yeah, I just think it's important to, to mention it.
Right. So, well, it says vote, so I will take a motion to accept the gifts provided, I think that's lovely, considering how they felt about her. Did you ever as a teacher?
Yeah, she was wonderful.
So would you like to make the motion to accept the gift from our family and friends?
Yes, accept the gift.
Second. Second. And we have a second here, all right?
She was great. She was absolutely great.
And I will take a vote. Why don't you start the vote?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Art?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
David?
Aye.
Dennis?
Yes.
Jim? And Bonnie, yes, okay. Do you have any transfers? I didn't see any. Okay, well, thank you and welcome aboard.
All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So... The first is update on regional school district planning board. As well, I'll make sure everybody knows the...there is a doodle poll was held in order to hold a meeting to disband the regional school district planning board. We submitted our doodle dates, and unless anyone else got something this afternoon, we haven't gotten anything back on a date for that yet, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Second, I know a couple of us received, and I'm assuming everyone who was on the board received a letter from Steve Bannon?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
As a member of the school committee.
Right.
As Berkshire Hills, yes.
Right, so Steve Bannon, who's chair of Berkshire Hills School Committee and also on the select board of Great Parenton, sent a letter acknowledging the work of the Southern Berkshire School District School Committee members on the regional planning board. I haven't spoken, I don't know if he sent it to everybody, but that was addressed to the school committee members. So just wanted to let you know that in terms of other decisions, nothing right now has happened beyond that. There is also, I don't know whether to put it here or chairman's report, doesn't matter, there's been outreach from Berkshire Hills to Alford to see if Alford wants to leave us and join Berkshire Hills School District. And at this point, at their select board meeting, it was made very clear by Chuck Ketchum that at this point, they're just getting information, they're getting numbers. Peggy noted that they did not make the outreach to Berkshire Hills, but that Berkshire Hills made the outreach to Alford. So that's just the straight information. All of the protocols, they're...I'm assuming that they're closing books and everything. I ran into Peter at Big Y, this vice chair, he didn't have any other information last night, so we're just waiting for that meeting to be announced. All right. And this is kind of unique, but I'm very pleased. Julie Hannam from the finance committee in Sheffield called me and spoke about the fact that they wanted to acknowledge, it's never unusual getting beaten up, they wanted to acknowledge the work of our school committee and also talk and speak about moving ahead. As you know, we're entering our finance committee. And Bob Kilmer, who is our, because I'm from Sheffield, current chair of the select board of Sheffield, is here representing himself. I didn't ask whether there had been a vote for you to be...
The board...
Approved.
Approved, so I'm going to be speaking for the board.
For the board, okay. And I assume the same thing happened with the finance committee, they had had a joint meeting. So Julie, thank you for this, I hope, discussion.
Thank you, Bonnie, for the opportunity to speak to the school committee tonight. I appreciate that. And indeed, the decision to come forward and speak, it was a joint meeting of the select board and the finance committee when we decided it would be nice to address you at this point. So certainly, you have just reorganized, we are reorganized, we are thinking about fiscal year '25, and we know that we will be working on that budget cycle very soon. We want to take the opportunity, however, first to thank the school committee and Beth and the superintendent for your hard work recently holding down the assessment increases to the town. That's been very, very important. We've taken great notice of that hard work. Both the finance committee and the select board have been pleased to recommend the school budget to our town meeting for the last few years, and those with longer institutional memory, there's a few in this room, know that that's not always been the case and that it's not always been pretty. Yeah, I see some smiles over there. We recognize and we applaud the effort it takes to write and administer all the various grants, including that newest Transcend grant, which just seems spectacular, which sustains and enhances the educational quality and infrastructure for our students and our faculty. They deserve the best, and we appreciate that these grants help keep the cost to the towns in check. With contractual obligations and inflation, we certainly know it'd be unreasonable, actually just impossible, to request a fully level funded budget for fiscal year '25. We're not going to do that. That said, we do trust that you will continue to do the hard work to hold the increase to a minimum. With Sheffield assessed at 52% to 53% of the overall school budget, it's a heavy load, and every dollar counts. Over the years, Sheffield has also tapped grants to try to augment our own budgets. However, we have had to defer infrastructure projects to keep our tax rate from increasing too much too fast. So before the budget cycle begins, we thought it prudent to come to you and first, thank you for the hard work you've done to contain these costs the past few years and to respectfully request that you try your best to continue that challenging work. We want very much to be able to, again, recommend the fiscal year '25 budget. And I will ask my colleague Bob, do you wish to add anything?
Well, I don't want to duplicate too much.
No, just in case you want to add.
The only thing I would like to add is, is there anything on the horizon that would have a major increase to the budget that you know of? I know it's early yet, and I'm not going to hold your feet to the fire. It's just, you know, we're trying to start our budget season two, and it would be nice to know if there was something major coming that was going to have a major lift.
No, and I don't anticipate that there's anything, and I think you guys know that it's really important to me that we always be very mindful of the funding that the taxpayers have. It's always been a goal of mine to be efficient and effective with resources. We get it, we get it all across, but I think one thing I would like to ask is if we could partner, and now maybe that we have some time, we can get the superintendent's roundtable going again, where we have the select board members and the school committee and the finance committee members to get together and talk about advocacy. The rural aid bill is out there, and there's lots of room for and need for some support to fund us, and that would take some pressure off of everybody if we work together on that. So, but I'm not anticipating anything if our goal is to do as much to offset costs in any way that we can.
And we do appreciate that, like Julie said, and this is repetitive, but very sincere. The last few years where we've been able to accept the budget and there's been no divisiveness and everybody's on board is a pleasure. It's never fun when...
On all sides, yes.
Yes, when things become divisive. I'd like to also thank everybody that participated in the eight-town regional. I mean, there was...I can't imagine for Bonnie or anyone that sat on that board, the hours that I saw that they put in, it was incredible. And I don't want to see it become divisive because it did start to get a little edgy at the vote time, but hopefully, you know, Berkshire Hills and Southern Berkshire can continue to be partners on what they can be, and I'm very happy that our school is still here, and you guys have done a great job providing a great education and minding the cost, which is, you know, I still have a town to run, so...and I know that's not your major concern, but you've done a great job balancing the education with the cost. So I thank you, and hopefully, we can continue this conversation through budget season and continue to have a good relationship that we've had in the past. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Does anyone have any questions for Julie or Bob? Well, I want to thank you because as Julie, you brought up, there are times when it's been horrendously contentious, and now to have people who understand and to have you come here before we're in the midst of all the items. And Sheffield's been pretty good at attending, you know, budget meetings, and I hope that will, as Beth said, hope that will continue. And the big point is where we can use our joint political currency. Because that's really important.
Yes, I believe, what is the date Paul Mark and Smitty is coming to Town Hall for?
Advocacy, something.
Yes, I'm trying to remember.
Both of them, together?
Something like conversation.
Yeah, coffee and conversation or something like that.
Oh, really?
It's coming soon.
Yes.
I just put it in my mind.
What was the date on that? Is that open to non-Sheffield members of the community?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, you know, any of the constituents. It's just it's being held at our town hall. I think they moved these coffee and conversations around.
That's cool.
Yeah, it is the 29th from 9:00 to 10:30.
29th.
And it's at the Sheffield Town?
At the Sheffield Town Hall.
That's one, next Wednesday?
Right after Thanksgiving, yes. Yeah, so it is right after holiday.
So you would hold it upstairs so that there would be enough room?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, that's cool. Wow, thank you.
Yeah, so that was great when you mentioned the advocacy. I'm like, okay, we can all be partners on rural school aid, and that would be one of the topics of conversation.
That's great. And who's running it? Is our select board running it, or is that the...
No, this is, I believe, Paul Mark.
Oh, good.
Administrations.
Wow, that's good.
And they do a lot of things together.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, and I think Paul's just been moving this all over his enormous district, and so we happen to be, you know, the host for this one down here.
Yeah, as far as possible from anywhere, as people say.
Smitty's been here a lot, so I think that's great. That's terrific that Paul, that they're coming together. That's good, that's fine.
Thank you.
I will be there.
I would be there if I can be, yeah, that's really awesome.
I mean, and also, I think it's good, given over the years, for Smitty to know how we are working together to move this ahead. And we hunt all the time. In the middle of Beth's conference, I found a possibility through the cultural council of a grant that could really help us with the work that needs to be done in the TAC back. So it's a case of, yeah, I mean, we all feel the impact. Every year, you know, we deal with more of ours, 2.5%, and that's always in our head, but we really appreciate the support, you know. I think we don't hear it, and...
That's great.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming and doing that.
But also the acknowledgement that we're all taxpayers in the district.
That's right.
Anyone else with a comment there? George McGurn.
Thank you, Bonnie.
You're welcome.
I would like to follow up on the comments of both Julie and Bob and also Beth, and kind of starting in reverse order. I think the conversations with the superintendent, with the finance committees and the side ports have been very productive and have certainly smoothed the way as we had some bumpy eight-town passages over the last three years. But also, the Smitty-Mark activities have proven to be really very helpful, and they were in Acremont in September. I'm pleased to know they're going to be in Sheffield, I guess, next week. And also with Ann Govey, who also is going to be in the Snack Looins in January. She is the new rural affairs person in the cabinet, and, you know, a former senator that worked with both Smitty and Mark, and has become a very helpful advocate. So I would encourage this general spirit I'm hearing tonight, but we really have opportunities that we have to grasp, so thank you.
George, thank you. All right, do we have any other comments? Well, again, thank the both of you. You're absolutely welcome to stay, leave, last as long as you'd like. I'm going to move on to the chairman's report. What, does someone have...nope. Okay, so MASIS Annual Conference. Anyone who attended who would like to make any comments? Sure. Go ahead.
Many things happened at the conference. One that I found most interesting was a kind of lunch meeting on AI in education, and I think it would behoove us all to think carefully about how we can integrate AI and make it a useful tool for education because it is the future. Students need to learn the most effective way to deal with it, and the teachers also need to develop a way to deal with it to keep an eye out for students cheating because it's a new technology and not everyone's going to understand how that works. AIs, the large language model AIs, are simultaneously brilliant writers and idiots because they will weave a very compelling and very well-written story and miss key details, state mistruths, or outright ignore details. And knowing how that works and how best to spot those things is useful both for students at the more advanced level and for teachers.
Thank you, good point, and I think that will definitely be something we might want, you know, Julie's team to look at in terms of curriculum when we get to another...
We're already...
You're already on it?
Aye.
Okay, great.
Happy to share.
Good.
I have two things to mention. One, there were a lot of really interesting sessions on legality stuff, and one that was particularly interesting to me was library support, and...but it was also interesting how much of the conversation was about supporting the superintendent and administrative staff when things get contentious. So that I thought that that was sort of, I admit, sorry, Beth, wasn't high on one of the things that was, that I would have considered to be an issue when there were questions regarding curriculum as well as, curriculum as well as was accessible to students and staff in libraries. But the other thing I wanted to say was, I sat in on the Division VI meeting, and typically, I have lots of ideas. But the Division VI, there's a lot of discussion about sharing opportunities for school committee education. for school committee education, school committee resources being the big one was open to us. There was discussion about following through on rural aid citizen, citizen lobbying opportunities. There was also regarding just Division VI-wide possibly looking into business interest budget discussions. I mean, not business, but interest-based budget negotiations. So taking just different ways of looking at how to integrate business, or business discussions rather than from a more argumentative place from everybody listening to what their, what their ideas are and what their needs are and then negotiating that way. I don't know that it's a particularly, you know, I don't know how successful it can be. It was very successful for North Adams as an approach to do, but it was expensive training. And so the discussion came up how to bring it to Division Y. It turns out there are also a lot of grants for, for education. So anyway, the Division VI meeting was pretty exciting, the degree to which all of the districts who were there, so it was Pittsfield, Adams, North Adams, Southern Berkshire, Central Berkshire, the support that each of the, each of the different school districts had for one another was pretty great. And I want to say that the other thing was I was surprised at how much the entire Division VI was paying attention to the negotiations between the two districts. And the discussion about how it's critical that for every district that we support the choices that districts have made and that the district, that the district residents have made for the districts.
That's, they actually.
Yeah, no, it was, it was, it was a really important discussion. I guess there'd been issues that had come up in central, for the Central Berkshire District and certainly for North Adams. So, yeah, no, it was really, so I was really, I was pretty excited about how much support there was intra or inter-district. So, yeah, it was great.
Sarah, any comments?
I just, I really, I enjoyed myself. I, this is the first time I went, obviously. And I went to a, you know, very, a lot of different discussions. And I, I did take away like a little bit from each and a lot from some. Forgot my book, my booklet. But no, it was, it was great. And it was really great to be around all, you know, all these different districts, school committee members and superintendents. Like, everybody's there for the same reason. So it was just, you know, you get to chat with people, you know, meet new people, different districts. And it was just really interesting to hear, you know, them share stories or, you know, things like that. So it was a, it was a very cool experience. I enjoyed it. Thank you.
Yeah. A thank you for the, we put it in the district for putting it in.
Thank the district, yeah.
Budget. I found very interesting and I came away with a lot of ideas about how beyond our newsletters, the things that we need to do in terms of communicating on a regular basis. You know, Beth and the principals do their weekly, but there are a lot of things that the person who spoke, I had seen before and he aimed at with some suggestions that, you know, I'd like to bring to the committee of ideas, how you have to engage on a regular basis and ways to do it. And I, I thought that was very good. Also, a very interesting conversation with a Central Berkshire School Committee member. And they're dealing with one community wanting to leave the district. And for those of you who've been, were on the regional planning board, their big issue is OPEB. And the discussion about what are you doing to plan because you're going to be responsible for that, those expenses. And it's really a thing that's, so it was very interesting, as you said, to meet people and do it that way. Okay. And Carl was not here, but we'll find, I assume, I know he voted for us, so we'll find out the results there. Also, for anyone, because we are MAS members, we can go online and get subsequent, you know, the reports, the sessions, and there may be some good follow-up on the AI that, you know, you might see if you go online that you've heard to us since.
There was a whole book presented that we were allowed to have a copy of. It's useful.
Oh, good. And Beth, from the MAS position, perspective, anything you want to?
Well, no, I mean, I, you know, I had the opportunity to be a presenter in one of the sessions. And I think most of us find it a very valuable time to spend with our school committee members as, as a, you know, a way to be more collaborative and to build that relationship as the leadership team in a district. So I think it's a really good opportunity. And we often always win almost, most in attendance with their superintendent.
With this.
I believe, I believe I won.
Yes.
Again, yeah, again.
Yeah. Well, I think, you know, you think, oh, conference, you know, that it, I feel like we learn so much from each other.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah.
So that was good. And Dennis, did you want to add anything from your perspective?
We had a pretty good turnout this year in terms of the numbers of school committee members that were there. And I, I would hope that we would have an equal number again next year because it's, you know, it was a little more than what we normally would have.
Mm-hmm. And the, this was the most, I mean, this was pre-pandemic level. Too bad the place where we stayed was.
Needs more space. We need more space.
Mm-hmm.
For the sessions.
Yeah, I sat on the floor for most every session I went to.
Yeah, there were a couple moments of feeling very unsafe.
Okay. With that, I'm going to go on to community feedback post-merger vote. I think I wear a label that says, don't you want to ask me about the merger?
Oh.
I couldn't, the eye doctor today. I mean, it happens, I expect it when I go to The Frog, but I don't, it's everywhere. So there are lots of people who are obviously still talking. Someone I never, you know, didn't know or anything has really evolved as a business owner from Egremont came over to the people I was with, The Frog. And they introduced me. They said, we know who she is. So I was ready for a bit of a, they said they voted no because they never could get a right answer on how much the school was going to cost. So that was very interesting. I'm sure that to a great extent, the people who are, you know, going back to what Bob said, the people who are anti are not approaching me, you know, in real numbers. I've heard that there are people who, you know, haven't given this up. And I think it'll be our job to show why we're doing what we're doing. I had somebody call me who said, I'd like to get a letter to Nathan Tambruch because she was so impressed. He's a senior who spoke in Egremont, well, here, but at the Egremont meeting. And she said, I was so impressed. And people who've loved the fact that we included all that in our newsletter, I've gotten positive feedback there. The nice thing that I keep on getting is, all right, today at the eye doctors, what are we going to do now to talk about education? Because that wasn't spoken about during these years. And somebody who's very well-respected beyond our communities, he said, look, I spoke against it in different meetings, said there was, there wasn't a discussion about education. And we can't let this three and a half years and how many hundreds of thousands of dollars that was spent, you know, just say, oh, we won the vote and go away. We need the calming time. But I think we, you know, transcend, I think it's going to be a big help for us in letting the community know what we're doing. So the comments I've gotten a lot about, what are you doing to address the issues? And people who were in Sheffield kept on noting how many little kids were there. I mean, they so had an overflow that our kids who have postering and everything, our kids wanted to come into the meeting and they got recruited to babysit. So Ashley Falls, I think, is having a major baby boom based upon what was there.
There are quite a few.
Yes, there is.
From the time that it, it pretty much wasn't hardly any children left in Ashley Falls. We went from my generation, which it was tons of children. We filled a bus just on the east, on the west side of Ashley Falls from Loop 7. The bus just made a little loop right through the center of town. And there would be over 60 kids on the bus and it began for school. So, and then there was almost no children left in Ashley Falls for a short period. And now, I had 15 trick-or-treaters this year.
Whoa.
So there, there has been a marked uptick in children.
Keep on encouraging.
The trick-or-treat, the trick-or-treat data set.
Can I give you some enrollment forms?
Official that is.
We're taking it.
My street's still zero for four years.
We'll take it. But I think the fact is that we had, you know, first of all, people were so impressed with Egremont. I mean, that was totally democracy in action. It was, you know, because they allowed an hour before somebody called the question. And except for one exchange, it was so polite, so engaging, the everyone. And it was a good thing for our kids to see who were there. Yeah. So anybody else who's had feedback? You had, have you had any, Kim? I'm sure.
I've had a lot of feedback, but mainly the thing is, is what are we going to do moving forward? And a lot of people do want to see some type of vocational program either brought back, resurrected, or started here at Mount Everett. Even if it's not like a full school, but maybe one or two programs or something like that.
Yeah. That's been brought up at every transcend meeting I've gone to. So I know it's beyond totally on your radar.
Oh, yeah. But I mean, I, I will still argue that there's ways to give students experiences that don't necessarily require traditional ways of the way voc education, I think, is in most people's minds. So I encourage us to think creatively and innovatively about ways we can give those experiences that are also cost-effective and, you know, sustainable for small communities.
And career preparation is a big part of what's being done in middle and high school now. So we have to look at it. And I mean, I just know from professionals in the industries I've heard about, where our kids come to them and they don't want to let them go off to college.
Yeah.
Because they're so good from what they've learned, you know, in the individual courses and then the strategies for success in the work field. So I think maybe we start a, people hate when I do this, but, and, and committee, an ad hoc committee on don't look vocational education, SBRSD, both what can we do and what do we have that maybe we're not promoting enough?
I would just really, really ask that we focus on the committee that we have and see what ideas are going to come right now before we do something else on top of it.
Okay.
Because I think there's, you know, we can spread ourselves too thin.
And they'll come up.
And they'll come up.
The discussions will come up and pretty much all, and be, be able to be incorporated in pretty much all of the.
So I will ask that among all of our committees, when we meet, we look, I, I see it door, that we look at that issue in our committees and see if we can come up with a really good way to do it. And it's, it's definitely an area, I think we may be able to get grants. Before David, anyone else in terms of community hearing things that they want to report back?
I've mostly been hearing the same as everybody else. I have a lot of support for the way that New Marlboro did their, did their meetings, did their meeting, that the vote was pretty close. And so that their, you know, how to, how to proceed, taking into account the different sides within, particularly within the New Marlboro budget. But overall, the support has been, I mean, a lot of what I'm hearing is phew, on the whole, to be honest. And, nice job.
Yes. Kim, I have to say, I've gotten from a few people, because geographically where Monterey is, people have said to me, I didn't think Monterey would go with us. And you did a lot of work. So, a lot of work.
But I want to say, I think the thing for the towns, for the townships where, like New Marlboro, where the vote was close, the fact that the conversation is on the whole kind of what you guys were alluding to, Julie and Bob, how do we move from here as a community? And I think that's, especially in this particular time, pretty remarkable. Pretty remarkable.
Yeah. That, and that we was, David, go to it. Your turn.
On the VOTEC conversation, while I think developing our VOTEC curriculum would be a good and useful thing, A, in terms of the subcommittee, I think that's probably something that belongs with the curriculum subcommittee, a conversation worth having there. But I think this is also an opportunity for us to develop a solid working partnership with great, with Berkshire Hills. Berkshire Hills has a deep interest in developing a robust VOTEC curriculum. They're, they clearly want, they made, I mean, to the point where they made that a part of the proposed agreement. It's something they're clearly invested in. So if they're going to put a lot of work into that and a lot of money into that, then rather than us developing our own curriculum, maybe it makes sense to develop a partnership with them where we can send the interested VOTEC students to their, maybe a day a week or something like that, to, we can look, provide the broader curriculum and make the most of our budgeting money.
Okay. Well, that's when we get to committees, you know, that's something can be looked at. Superintendent's report.
In the interest of time.
What?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry, George. I didn't see it. It's not up now. But, George?
Uh, no, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine, Bonnie. I wanted to say something, but now you've moved on.
No. It's because I didn't see your hand. If it pertains.
Okay. Well, in, in terms of what Bob was saying, and for those of you who did attend the Egremont meeting, and I certainly do appreciate, Bonnie, the comments you made about the ambiance at that meeting, including the overflow of our childcare facility where we had to turn down children, which we are not accustomed to doing. But, you know, the Egremont delegation to the eight-town meeting has, for some time, proposed a freestanding 14-town vocational school. And so we have not forgotten that proposal and are looking for the right time to resurrect it. But I think this is now a time of healing and the neighborliness.
Thank you, George. Salute to you on that. Definitely. Thank you. All right. With that, Dr. Riggle.
I am going to abstain from giving a report as I let everybody else go and start their Thanksgiving. So I think curriculum and student services will just hold for tonight. And we shared our transcend experience, which is where we were most of last week.
Okay. Thank you so much. Okay, thank you so much. All right, new business. We have reorganization of subcommittees list attached. What I'd really like to do is, if it's okay with everyone, if you take a look at the list, have I missed the list? Thank you. If you take a look at the list, if you have any request for changes, to let me know, you know, just send me an email and say you want to move from here to here, if there are any requests. And also for those of you who are chairs of subcommittees, if you would please let me know if you are willing to continue in that position, all right? So you can tell me that on the way out or.
Or nod your head and say yes.
Right. So to assume that that is, was a yes from you, Nancy?
That's a yes for me, yes.
Okay, so we'll have that. Sarah?
Sure.
Okay. Sarah's a yes, Nancy's a yes. Policy?
Yes.
Okay. Personnel, yes. Superintendent Jim, are you willing to continue as chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Art, building grounds, yes? Oh God, you guys are great. All right. All right, the curriculum, yes. The MASC, we made it official that Carl's our delegate. All right. The executive minutes review. All right, guess what? I could cross out the next one as soon as that next meeting takes place. All right, so I think we are, if anybody wants changes to their assignments, let me know. But we know we have our chairs in place and we can move on. Hey, this is pretty good. We're not horrendous in terms of time there. I am, this agenda for the school committee, you had included a basic as we're going into budget season.
Right, so the, I know that Jonathan had started. The only thing that in November you don't see, looking at our year-long agenda, is the budget adoption calendar, so we'll have that. We've kind of started to put that together. So at the next meeting, we'll bring that to the committee for review and approval. Or really more notification of when the dates are based on, required.
And we did our reorganization, okay. And so all of these things will come to December?
Right.
Okay. All right, so if we look at, is there anything you want to call our attention to on this?
On the year-long agenda?
Yeah.
No, so again, this is what we put, what we put together based on what we've been doing throughout the years to ensure that you see how the reports that we present to the committee tie to our goals and our strategy for continuous improvement so that you're getting updates all along through these types of reports. So it's up to you guys. If there's something that you would like to see differently, you'd like to add something, but otherwise this kind of flows with the way and the requirements as the year goes on, you know, this is.
And you know what, looking at this calendar, if there's anything that anyone wants to see added to it?
I should also point out the school improvement plans are going to have to move to December because everybody was traveling. There was no time in November. We typically do them in November, but they'll have to be on the next.
And MCAS, you said we're going to do in like.
I did MCAS, two weeks.
But you did the over, you were going to give us a little more detail?
No.
No?
I was pretty detailed. I gave you like.
All right.
Yeah.
Conversation, all right. Okay, and the audit report, is that going to be?
Well, we're still waiting.
Will change, yeah, because we haven't had.
Right.
All right.
I have to say, I just want to say that for me, now that I'm going into my third year, it's now starting to make sense and starting to flow for me really well, seeing, seeing what the monthly, or what the, what the process is per year. It's now making actual, it's making sense now.
Good. We like hearing that.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
So, anything else on the calendar? Seeing none, let's quickly move to subcommittee reports. Finance?
No updates.
Okay, community relations?
Great letter.
The news, that was, you're talking about the newsletter in the previous year.
Yeah, and then.
New Marlboro got it.
New Marlboro got it. Yes, we got it. Our section of New Marlboro got it finally, yay. And we're going to be getting ready to do a whole bunch more as we move on to all the things that everybody's been asking in terms of information.
Yeah, and my friends in Egremont this time got it.
Two?
Yeah. As a matter of fact, one of them got like three copies. I don't know how that happened.
Easter famine, right?
Making up for lost.
Thank you. Policy?
We're, we need to have a meeting, but I haven't booked one yet.
Okay, so you'll take care of that. Personnel and negotiations, we don't have anything right now that we need. So Bob, we're fine for right now. Bob is the person who represents all five towns as the town rep. Buildings and grounds, Art?
We did meet.
Yeah.
We got introduced to Ed, the new maintenance man. He's getting up to speed with everything. We got an update on the HVAC system. It's pretty much complete. There's a couple of glitches that I think he was coming in the near future to work on. The solar project, all the panels are installed. The electrical work is now in the process. They're hoping that beginning of January, it'll be up and running.
Are you pleased so far with what's going?
And actually, they've already fixed one of the, they were waiting for two sections of the HVAC. So one is done. They've got another piece that they're still waiting for, but it's very minor at this point. So they're moving right along on, on all of those things. And the solar project's been, every once in a while, they dump some materials on top of our offices. That makes you jump a little bit, but it's been a very, it's been a very smooth process, I think.
Well, I could say, I got my first notice. I switched to solar. And I received a notice from National Grid, you've been doing really well. I went from 200 and something dollars to 60.
We've gone to zero.
Okay, I'm not competing.
No, no, that's still, no, I'm just saying that, but, but I mean, we put in a, in a large array. But the, it's, it's not to compete. It works. It works really, really well. And, you know, even if what you're talking about is 75% less, that's huge.
That's huge. So I can't wait to see, Art?
We talked about things that were on the list that have been completed and working on. He's starting to work on projects for the new budget. And we're going to have a walkthrough of all the buildings.
Great.
We just need to put, find the dig and put that together.
And make sure there's not a lot of ice and snow, right?
Oh, come on.
Especially for me.
Okay, Art, thank you very much. I'm glad you guys got together. Jim?
No report.
No report.
Oh, I thought you wanted, I thought you wanted a report back on. We had the meeting, we went over Beth's goals.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That was, didn't we report that at the last meeting?
I think we may have. Was it the meeting right?
We have, right. And we have to wait until December now for the additional information that Beth's going to provide if she gets three minutes.
Or maybe, yeah.
Four minutes.
Yeah, I need four. No, that's fine.
Thank you. And executive minutes review, no. Anything from you, Dennis, as our warrants person?
Well, you know, we, I sign them all the time.
And the curriculum has not met. We, MASC is done, so I don't think we have anything else on that list at this point. Okay, okay, future agenda items. Future agenda items, seeing none. Guess what we could do if anyone would like to?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Holy moly.
Any objection?
No.
Seeing no objection, we are adjourned before 7:30. Drive safely. Have a wonderful Thanksgiving.